Good evening and thank you for joining us, the Fairfax Town Council Candidate Forum. The focus of tonight's forum will be to introduce you to the candidates who are up for potential election on November the 8th, insight into their background and their positions on various issues as they relate to our town. My name is Karen Begley and I'm the past president of the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Marin County for organizing and moderating this evening's event. The Fairfax Chamber of Commerce would like you to know a few things that are happening locally and very soon. One of those being that this weekend we'll have a Fairfax Irish Festival of Music and Dance all weekend, Friday evening through Sunday, right downtown, as well as our Halloween Parade is back on on Monday, October the 31st. Business owners and representatives of business owners, please be sure to join us for a mixer that we're having mid-November and we encourage you all to attend. We are delighted to co-host this forum and to ensure that the voters have every opportunity to make an informed decision on this important leadership in our town. Now, I would like to hand the reins over this evening to our moderator Becky Binguay of the Marin League of Women Voters. Thank you.
Thank you very much and hi, everybody. I am Becky Binguay, your moderator for this evening's forum. Thank you so much for joining us for this candidate forum featuring candidates for Fairfax Town Council. Thank you to our host partner, the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce, for inviting the League to moderate. We are honored to be here. We would also like to thank our host partner, along with the members of the public, for submitting tonight's questions. The League is a trusted, nonpartisan membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We promote voter education and advocate for issues. We never endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Moderating candidate forums is an important part of this work. With me tonight are League members Elaine Biagini, our timekeeper, Anne Wakely, off-screen providing Zoom support, Carol Inklis, our forum coordinator, and the technical support team at the Community Media Center of Marin, CMCM. Although not with us tonight, a special thanks to Jill Sampson of our question review team. As a reminder, all candidates have agreed to participate under the ground rules set for this forum. This forum is being simulcast on Marin TV Channel 30 facilitated through our partnership with CMCM. It is being recorded and will be available through our website at MarinLWV.org. It will also be rebroadcast on Marin TV Channel 30. Days and times will be posted on our website. Candidates will be allowed specific times for their opening and closing remarks and to respond to questions. There are five candidates running for Fairfax Town Council and all are with us this evening. Stephanie Hellman, Cindy Swift, Lynette Shaw, Holly Beatty, and Liesel Blash. The candidates are invited to make a two-minute opening statement. After that, each will have one minute to answer each of the questions. To be fair, I will rotate the order in which they respond to questions. For opening statements, we will begin with Cindy. So Cindy, please unmute and go ahead.
Good evening. I'm a 40-year resident of Fairfax and have been involved in the community on various boards and commissions since moving to Fairfax. I'm currently the vice chair of the Planning Commission and have been on the commission since 2016. I was appointed in 2020 to the current Fairfax Measure F Special Municipal Tax Oversight Committee and I'm also a member of the Cascade Canyon Firewise Steering Committee. My priorities include disaster preparedness and improving our infrastructure, which go hand in hand. An example is our storm drain infrastructure, which is inadequate to deal with localized flooding and runoff, preserving our open spaces and environment, concerned with the effects of exterior light pollution on wildlife and ecosystems. I developed a dark sky exterior lighting standard, which is now applied to all new construction in Fairfax, affordable and compatible housing. I voted as a planning commissioner for Victory Village, which is 53 units of low-income senior housing. And in 2017, I asked my fellow planning commissioners to prohibit the short-term rental of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to preserve long-term rental housing. So we've had a prohibition in Fairfax since 2017. A sustainable and transparent budget to be able to fund the critical needs of our community and with the community's confidence. And last but most important, improve our community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, next is Holly. Holly, please unmute and give us your statement.
Thank you so much, Becky, and I just would like to begin my statement with the greatest thanks to the League of Women Voters for our holding this and also, of course, the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much, everyone. I am a inspired person that wants to make a difference in people's lives for the better. I see that we are at a critical time in our beautiful town of Fairfax, where we are headed for a place where we do not have protection for private property rights, where we are being told by the state through mandated housing elements to overbuild in our small, unique, and precious town, while at the same time we are facing destructive fire and flooding. We have seen nothing from the current Town Council nor the current Planning Commission and its members to really enact fire drills, to see what it is like at a rush hour time with hundreds of people streaming down our streets in the case of emergency, that one drill has been accomplished. We don't have the manpower that we need in our forces on the police department or in our fire department. And both the Town Council and the Planning Commission have had ample time to divert funds into hiring greater staff. That hasn't been done. I am here because this is a critical time and I am the right person with courage and with a connection to the community, with the business community especially, and with listening to what our true needs really are to protect our private rights and also to collaborate and build real community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Holly. Next is Liesel.
Hi, I'm Liesel Blash. I am a social science researcher with more than 25 years of applied public sector research experience. I have lived in Fairfax for almost 11 years now. I'm running for Town Council because I want to be part of a progressive, solutions-driven team that can address the challenges and opportunities that face us in the coming years. These include the impacts of climate change, a lack of housing affordability that's changing the face of our town, state mandates to build more housing, and the introduction of new funding opportunities that may help us enhance our infrastructure and improve our town's livability. Barney Frank once famously said, "Government is simply the name we give to the things we choose to do together." That is especially important in a small town like ours. We're neighbors. We talk together. We need to be able to collaborate and create an accessible and effective partnership between the community members and local government to get things done. A couple of things that differentiate me, I, through my nonprofit work in affordable housing advocacy, I have extensive background in affordable housing policy and this would be helpful in shaping our state housing mandate to address local housing needs and retain as much local control as possible and in implementing and monitoring our new tenant protection ordinances. Through my applied research work, I have experience in evaluating the impact and effectiveness of policies and programs and some of my research has been used in policy changes at the state and local level. It's also given me experience in budget and project management. Through my activism and advocacy work with groups like the Marin Organizing Committee and other local organizations, I have learned that politics is really the art of forging working relationships within and across institutions, as well as with individuals. Being on Town Council is a team sport and not a solo endeavor. Through activism, I have developed relationships with electeds, public sector staff, nonprofit leaders, and activists across Marin. It's provided me with valuable connections and a big picture view of where Fairfax fits into its broader context. So Fairfax to me is a very special place. I want to ensure that we can pass our very special community and the special world in which it resides to future generations. And thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, Liesel. Next up is Lynette.
Hello, I'm Lynette Shaw. I'm well-known for pioneering the cannabis industry, but I'm also experienced in many politically active ways here. I spent 20 years as an Assistant Security Chief, training hundreds of security guards and fire safety and fire-watching at large events. My dad was a firefighter, so I'm very worried about fire and safety here in Marin, especially in the town of Fairfax. I am a leader of an environmental activist group that helped save a third of the Black Point Forest Rescue Project and I was endorsed by the Sierra Club because of my longstanding work as an environmentalist and a successful activist. I've been concerned about human rights for a long time and I've been politically active in many ways. I'm very concerned about this public safety and I'm also concerned about the the plans to build a whole bunch of units here without thinking about escape routes or devising a plan or building some way to get for us to get out of here. And I think that needs to be reviewed. We have fire, fire safety, flood safety, and earthquake safety to think about in our funny little community. I have plans to refound the volunteer fire brigade because we don't have one anymore. We have, and we have to look at the traffic. There's many things we're looking at and I'm getting a lot of feedback from several people asking me to run, so I'm getting a lot of feedback from people over Fairfax about what they'd like to see. And they'd like to see the streets fixed. They'd like to see the sidewalks fixed. They'd like to see, you know, a lot of things that focus on the people of Fairfax and they also know I will stand up for what I believe. I'll stand up for the people and I'm not afraid to stand up to the government, obviously, since I spent 19 years fighting and beating the federal government on behalf of the cannabis industry. So I'm happy to be here and I appreciate the opportunity to speak out in this forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette. And finally, opening statements from Stephanie.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Hellman. I'm delighted to participate in this forum. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for facilitating this candidate session, as well as to the Chamber for hosting us this evening. I think it speaks volumes about our town that we have five people in this race and all of us are women, so thumbs up to that. I grew up in Marin County, as did my husband. We're raising our three children here. I have a deep love and affinity for Marin and my town of Fairfax. I believe there's much we can do to protect our little town, our environment, protect the safety of our community members, and better serve those who are financially vulnerable. Having served three years as council member, I now know how effective and transferable my experience in the corporate sector is in serving this public office. Time and again, I have proven I listen, I act, and deliver on the needs of my community. This includes in March 2020, I mobilized community leaders to stand up a coronavirus task force, serving our most vulnerable. I led bold new electrification policies and a climate. As a member of the Climate Action Committee, I helped shape and promote the most aggressive climate action plan in the county. I spearheaded a movement to build and self-fund a community skate park. I conceived and secured approval of new small business grants and programs like Fairfax Open for Business to revitalize our downtown commercial activity. As a member of the Ross Valley Fire Department Board, I am outspoken on the fact that we have unacceptable substandard firefighter staffing in our department. The community needs to understand this risk and we need to do better to protect our community and our firefighters. I'm currently leading the initiative to pass rent stabilization and strengthen just cause protections in our town. I'm inspired to lead or contribute to a social or environmental cause. I try to consider equity in everything, whether it's social, economic, or racial. I'm driven to create policy and programs that are fair, consider everyone, and respond directly to our climate emergency. Thank you so much again.
Thank you, Stephanie. And now for the questions. So each candidate will have one minute to answer each of the questions. So for the first question, what can the Town Council do to support Fairfax businesses? And we'll begin with Holly.
Thank you so much. What can the Fairfax Town Council do to support local businesses? I think as a local businessperson for the last five years here in Fairfax, that I'm a great person to ask that question of. During the time of the pandemic, what I experienced from my local community was actually very little support in terms of helping me to mitigate the challenges of having a business that had to operate outside. I believe that a lot of our businesses were really put in tight situations and they had to overcome a lot of barriers to maintain openness. And the town continues to create more and more permit costs, operation costs, tax costs, and I think that they don't realize the actual cost of running a business, having employees, and ensuring that your employees and your business are not just skating by, but actually really healthy and thriving to make the town a better place. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Liesel.
Yeah, I think the town has done a fair amount to support local business, especially during the pandemic. I think the approval of outdoor dining spaces did help some businesses and help people draw customers, despite the fact that we had, you know, this sort of shutdown. We've also supported and encouraged small locally-owned businesses rather than encouraging chains. We could do more. The town needs to meet frequently with the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce to understand the needs of local businesses and local workers. Small towns thrive when there's a good relationship between the local government and the Chamber of Commerce. I'd encourage the formation of a downtown merchants association. I would support more events like the Art Walk, which brings people to our businesses and celebrates both local artists and businesses. I would focus on infrastructure projects that would improve our downtown sidewalks and streets and other amenities to encourage visitors to our downtown. I'd like to see more welcoming ceremonies for new businesses. The town could connect potentially new businesses to locally available business startup resources by creating a webpage to connect people to those resources. And finally, we need to explore options to create more workforce housing to allow workers to live here and help local businesses recruit and retain workers.
Thank you. All right, next is Lynette. Go ahead and unmute.
Oh, there you go. Okay, well, I have a unique business. Of course, the experience has been much different. We were one of the only, I think we were the only business allowed to be open at all at the beginning of the pandemic because the dispensary was determined to be a essential business, which was terrifying, but we had to scrub everything down three times a day. Everybody was very relieved to come get their medicine and no one got sick because of our strict standards. Thank God, this has also loosened up now, but it was very, it was intense and I had a lot of support from everybody. We need to lower the permit and business fees to encourage more businesses to open up. We need to make sure we have parking for customers. We need to advertise the town as a whole more. I think they should reprint, the Chamber of Commerce used to print a map of businesses in downtown to hand out to visitors. And I think that was very helpful for business to have an actual little physical map to hand to your visitors. I do, I do agree that we need to work with the Chamber of Commerce, kind of beef it up again. And, and I really enjoy having my business in Fairfax.
Thank you. Stephanie, you're next.
Yes, thank you for this question. So I have ideas which I will share, but first off, I think it's really important to ask the businesses what they feel they need and I think a survey would be a really good starting point. From a marketing perspective, I see a lot of opportunity for cross-marketing of restaurants and our retailers. We have a very diverse set of retailers, but I know that folks outside of Fairfax don't necessarily know that we have this plethora of consignment stores, for example, and consignment is all the rage right now in retail. We do have a downtown merchant association. It's very informal. I would love to support it more and I think the Chamber needs some support too. So whatever the council and staff can do to offer support in that regard, we did a ton of economic recovery during the pandemic work that I'm really proud of from a grant and programming standpoint, and we had merchants and restaurants thanking us profusely. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Cindy.
Thank you. So I've visited and talked to a lot of the merchants in the downtown area and some of their concerns centered around cleaning the sidewalks downtown, especially in certain areas. They feel that detracts from the downtown and the businesses. Fixing downtown sidewalks that need repair. And third, replacing parking that was lost to the parklets. There are some areas downtown that could have more parking spaces. So that would be one of the things that I would be looking at to support all of the downtown businesses. Thank you.
Thanks. And good lead-in, Cindy, for question two. Parking is a big issue for downtown businesses. Do you have any thoughts or positions on how Fairfax can address its parking needs? And we'll begin with Liesel.
Yes, I think parking continues to be a huge issue in Fairfax, both downtown in the commercial area, but also in the neighborhoods that surround the downtown area. I know that I live in a very busy neighborhood behind the theater and we do take a lot of the overflow parking from the downtown. And so I think that one of the things that we've talked about in the past is, you know, whether or not there's some way to work with private property owners that have parking that is perhaps underutilized on weekends to take some of that overflow and possibly generate income for the town. We have a lot of visitors from out of town who enjoy, for instance, being on the trails all day, either on foot or on bike. And there's not a lot of long-term parking for them outside of the neighborhood. So if there was some way for us to capitalize upon that, I think it would be useful for everyone involved. And so I also think that we have talked about having a parking management plan and really looking at whether or not we should have parking permits for local neighborhoods downtown as a way to manage parking.
Thank you. And next, Lynette.
Parking is always a concern because of all the activities that happen in downtown Fairfax. I really love the parklets for the restaurants. I think that we might need to sacrifice or shorten them and add a little more parking there possibly. I don't think we should reduce any parking that we currently have because most of the time we're already parked up already. And we have this mandate to build and we have to figure that out because are they going to be providing parking in the buildings? Are they going to be spreading people out in the neighborhood to park where there is no parking? This is very complex. I really appreciate having the parking that we have at School Street Plaza because it actually is probably the most parking available in downtown at all times. It's a good question. I don't have a big answer for that.
Okay, thank you. Next is Cindy.
Thank you. So parking, as everyone has said, is a major issue. We don't have enough parking for our own community to drive downtown and use our businesses or family to come in visiting our community and be able to go downtown. And I agree with Liesel that the overflow gets to the neighborhoods and impacts them. Some of the things we could do is we have some curbs downtown that are still painted red for no parking. We can look at those to see if we can add some parking spaces. We also can look at a shared parking program, which when we have businesses now as part of their use permit, we add that they have to participate in a shared parking program downtown, should we develop one. So I think those are a few of my ideas for adding parking. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephanie, you're next.
Yeah, I think it would be worth updating the informal study that was done last summer. If we can have town staff, you know, look at it three or four points in the day and see what kind of vacancy there is in terms of parking. I am in favor of permit parking for select neighborhoods, particularly behind the movie theater. I am concerned about those neighbors and I don't think it's fair to them to have all that spillover. I also think there's a need to communicate the parking policy to the business owners downtown, as well as the folks who live downtown. I've recently heard some confusion about tickets that both the members of those populations have recently gotten ticketed and they're puzzled about what the policy was. So I think there's some opportunity for communication there. And I also think there's opportunity to optimize the parking behind the yoga studio to re-stripe. I don't think that's the best use of space there. I think that could create some additional spots there. The Bank of America is temporarily offering us some relief. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thank you. And Holly.
Thank you so much. I am a systems, big-picture thought leader. For me, it's really easy to see how we can be much more creative with our parking solution. There are places in town, for example, the parking lot next to Fairfax Market, the area behind the yoga studio, the Bank of America, which we're not sure what that's going to become, where we could have attractive parking structures that did actually take in revenue for our town from out-of-town guests. We could easily have parking permits that we have in our cars for a local resident. And more importantly, I think we really need to understand that you can't talk about parking and parking challenges and housing and housing elements separately. You can't ask to have 400, 500 new high-density housing units and also talk about fire safety and parking all separately. It's one issue. We need to safeguard our streets. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. On to question three. Since the start of the COVID pandemic, outdoor dining structures have become significant additions to our local restaurants. What is your position on these structures and should there be fees? And we'll begin this question with Lynette.
I personally love the parklets. It's very, it's very European. When I was in Paris, they had that similar type of outdoor dining and I know it really saved, it saved our restaurants and I think they should be encouraged. Some of them, I think, should be a little bit smaller because of the parking situation. Maybe that's not the solution. Now that the restaurants are starting to recover post-pandemic, that is appropriate, but not a major fee, I would say would be, you know, a good thing to help the town. But I'm in general, I don't want to see fees raised because we already have a lot of permit fees and a lot of business fees and taxes that we have to pay as a business, you know, as a business. So I strongly support the parklets. I'd like to see them stay and if they can help the town now that we're all starting to look like we're going to survive, then they should contribute to the town.
Thank you. And Stephanie?
Yes, thank you. I love the parklets. They bring the community together. They've been a wonderful enhancement. We surveyed the community. Well over 80%, I think it was 86%, were in favor of the parklets. So that is a very, very strong support. Recently, the council voted to offer fees or incur fees. And we looked at what was happening in the market, including Marin and on the peninsula and we came in at a very modest rate. So soon as almost looking at a $5,000, we are looking at much, much lower than that and offering a 50% discount for the existing parklets, which I think is reasonable considering some of them have some construction adjustments to make to comply with the new specifications for a long-term design. But I love them and I'm very happy that they're here to stay.
Thank you. And Cindy?
Thank you. It ties in, the parklets tie into parking as well. It ties in, the parklets tie into parking as well. Wanted to mention that our general plan for the downtown area recommends no loss in parking. I do think there should be fees and I think there should be an annual fee for the parklets. And a concern would be that the number of parklets we have and no discussion of in our ordinances as to how many parklets would be available downtown and its relation to the loss of parking. So I think that needs to be addressed going forward. Thank you.
Thank you Cindy. And Holly?
As a business owner in Fairfax, I participated in the outdoor special permit process to have not a parklet, but a yoga let outside my yoga studio at School Street. I can tell you that the process was painstaking, that it took six months to pass the ability to have something outside the studio. Also, it cost me about five thousand dollars to improve with plans and et cetera. What I don't think that this council that we have in our town and also the members that have spoken so far on this panel realize is these parklets were as a result of the loss, the tremendous loss of business revenue. I lost more than a hundred thousand dollars a year due to COVID restrictions. And so how many years does it take to reimburse me for that? Maybe two, maybe five? It's not time to ask for fees for the parklets. And we can find other parking and we can find other ways to have fire safety by not overbuilding. Thank you.
And Liesl?
I kind of feel like the parklet saved our downtown and they are wonderful and wildly popular. They also kind of reached this happy medium where there had been a fight sometime in the past about whether or not, you know, you could close off part of downtown and have sort of this outdoor dining and gathering experience. Well, we kind of have both now. We have outdoor dining and we still have our traffic thoroughfare. And it really creates a buzzing and happy community where people can see each other more and talk and stop when they see someone they know, you know, having lunch along the sidewalk. I think some of the things that are important are, you know, we are trying to standardize them and have them permitted and also ask them to, you know, pay a fee every year because they are using public space basically. But I don't think it should be an excessive fee. The other thing we really need to work on is standardizing them, making sure that there's visibility. So it's safe for bicyclists and pedestrians and automobile drivers at the same time. And also that there's some real issues around accessibility and the sidewalks being as crowded as they are for some older adults and people with disabilities, which I've heard about when I've been out walking. So I really hope that we can explore that better and make it universal design for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to question four. The proposed Fairfax housing element shows one hundred and sixty-one living units being built on one point nine acres at School Street Plaza. The only way to get that density is to go up five stories. What is your position on five stories at School Street Plaza and where will the displaced businesses go? We're going to start this with Stephanie.
Yeah, could you repeat the question, please? I'm just taking notes.
Sure. The proposed Fairfax housing element shows one hundred and sixty-one living units being built on one point nine acres at School Street Plaza. The only way to get to that density is to go up to five stories, up to five stories. What's your position on five stories at School Street Plaza and where will the displaced businesses go?
Yeah, I am not able, I have seen nothing about five stories at that location. We are sizing the environmental impact for one sixty-one at that location. My understanding is that five stories would be in opposition to our odds, the design specifications that are still in draft, but are going into the housing element. And I should add that nothing is final until we submit and we are certified as far as the housing element update. But I have not, I am not able to confirm that five-story statement. It's just nothing that I've seen or has come across the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cindy.
As far as five stories at School Street Plaza, I have not seen that in the draft of the housing element. I don't know that that would fall under the odds development as well. But I would not be four or five stories at School Street Plaza. It is incompatible with the rest of that neighborhood. And parking.
Okay, thank you. Holly?
Thank you so much. Well, having lived at School Street Plaza for five years and ran a business there during that time, I can tell you I have seen personally very detailed architectural drawings for fifty units. And that was three stories tall. Now that did include a parking structure underneath. But Mr. Fred Azazi some twenty years ago did bring a proposal to the town to build fifty units. There was some gentrification that was beautiful with shops down below. But I can tell you from being on that property and looking at those plans directly, that yes, indeed, if you go above a hundred fifty, two hundred, one seventy-five, I think is the number somewhere, you will have to go up many stories high and it will go against everything this town stands for. You will have to level all of the beautiful trees that have been planted by Mr. Azazi by hand and you will defile the beautiful creek behind the property. I am completely against this. Thank you.
Okay, and Liesl?
Yes, I have been looking at this for a while because with, my understanding is a hundred and sixty-seven units is sort of a hypothetical and that it will be studied and there'll be a sequoia analysis. And that, you know, whatever people say as they're, you know, it's almost like what you say when you apply for a grant, you want five hundred thousand dollars and you get three hundred and fifty. So I assume that some of those units won't be feasible on that size lot because it has some issues with both the creek setback and possibly some landslide issues or instability. So I also think that we are in the process of approving the subjective development and design standards in which we said that the maximum building height would be two point five stories with three stories for a density bonus. So I think that there's going to have to be some negotiation done about, you know, what can actually fit in that site. That said, it's a perfect site for if we're going to have to build more housing, it's right downtown, it's close to amenities. But I do, I'm concerned about both the businesses that are there being displaced and whether there'll be new spaces for them. And also about what will happen to the tenants, many of whom are section eight tenants in live-work spaces there.
Thank you. Lynette?
Hello, I've been a tenant at School Street Plaza for over twenty-five years. I think that the proposal is, I'm adamantly opposed to this proposal because that would bring at least two hundred and fifty new cars into downtown. If they don't provide for parking, that would leave every parking place parked up all the time with the neighbors and it would ruin our business, our customers. There'd be no place to bring in customers. It doesn't make any sense. Having some big building there is not what the downtown is about. That's where everybody already parks to go to the ball field, to go shopping, to go to the bank, to do whatever they're doing. They all come to School Street and that has been the main parking area for years and years and years. I'm very concerned about, there's over twenty businesses that are housed there. And this is why we're working on this right now to figure out what we can do. If this proposal does go through in some form, what's going to happen to all the people that are tenants there, all the businesses that are tenants there? And the town has not provided for any of these concerns of the people and of the businesses. So we're working on that.
Thank you. Okay, question five. Traffic congestion is worse on neighborhood roads in downtown. What ideas do you have to help this situation? And we'll begin with Cindy.
I think we talked a little bit about this before. I think we need to look at a shared parking program in the downtown area. We need to free up some additional parking spaces. As far as the amount of actual traffic going through, I don't know how we would change that for traffic going in some of the areas like Dominga and those neighborhoods when we have the roads that we have. And we are only limited to those couple of roads. But I think having a traffic management program such as a shared parking down there would help offset some of that congestion in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Holly?
One of the things I love about living in Fairfax is the neighborly way we can live, you know? Yes, I love walking downtown to the good earth. I love bicycling downtown. I love to see others cycling to school and taking their children to school on their bicycles. I love the way that you can zip up and down, you know, to get a coffee at the roastery. We live in this town to enjoy this town. And the constraints that we have right now are creativity. And we need to find ways to create more real positive traffic patterns that allow for all of the walking and the cycling and the cars to all work together. And yes, through collaboration and shared resources, we also need to really look at whether or not we should be joining a lawsuit against the housing element that would bring too many people into our town. Thank you.
Liesl?
Yeah, I think we've had some positive efforts on looking at how to decrease traffic. I think one of the most famous ones is started in Fairfax is Safe Routes to School and it really encourages students to use active transportation to get to school by bike, roller skate, scooter, walking. And also we have a successful yellow school bus program. And I think that we can learn from these programs that are focused on children to try to find some ways to also get adults maybe to try different forms of transportation that would be a little bit less automobile-focused. That's not a possibility for everyone, but it is something for us to think about. We have also to really look at maybe doing some more traffic study. Our downtown is configured in such a way that it causes some sort of crazy traffic and it's a little bit of an intractable problem, but it does seem like something that we could put a little bit more study into. We also need to really look at how to get, you know, what's going to happen with transit. Transit really took a hit during COVID shutdowns and people are not returning to transit. So I think we have a little bit of a problem in terms of, you know, just how people are choosing to get around and what works for them. So we need to really look at that. Thank you.
And Lynette?
Well, first of all, we need to get our buses back on schedule. They could, a lot of buses out during the pandemic and we haven't seen them come back to our normal schedule like we had a few years ago. There were a lot more buses at a lot more times and that has not returned to Fairfax, which of course increases, people need to use their cars. Also, you need to deal with this realistically. This is Marin County. We use our cars. I mean, it's nice to go downtown on your bicycle. I have a Segway, which I love. But I'm not going to be able to do shopping, go out of town, go to Costco. I have to be in my car. The traffic needs some action now. I mean, I think it's been studied pretty much. I think we need to figure out something that would actually work to help. And the first thing I would do, of course, would be to renew the bus schedule and allow people to have the luxury of having buses that are frequent. We used to have them every half hour. And that's how, that's will encourage people to take the bus if they show up every half hour. That needs to come back and that would help the traffic problem quite a bit.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Yes, thank you for the question. Sir Francis Drake is definitely an issue and I'm in favor of a traffic study of Sir Francis Drake corridor all the way heading west as well as our downtown. There's too many cars going up Sir Francis Drake, particularly to the school destinations, which I'm very familiar with. The bus passes, the cost of a bus pass for students is essentially the same price as an e-bike. And so I think we need to really think about that. I'm all in favor of e-bikes. So that's another, that opens up another door of opportunity for us. How are we ensuring that pedestrians, cars and bikers are all safe in our town? And we are looking at that. We're talking, looking at a walk your wheels campaign downtown. And I think we absolutely need a bike lane and down Broadway. In the neighborhoods, in the hillside neighborhoods, we have inconsistent application of fifteen miles an hour. And there's a lot of danger in our community related to that. So I'd like to see some focus there.
Thank you. All right, on to question six. Fairfax and and Salmo Children's Center is in danger of losing their lease after some fifty years in operation. Can you describe how you will support the continuation of an important diverse low-fee Fairfax institution? And we'll begin with Holly.
Thank you for beginning with me on this question because it is near and dear to my heart. I do not understand why this has not been brought forward by the town council yet as a significant priority. We talk about inclusion, we talk about equity, we talk about wanting to support households of all economic situations. And yet, these folks, these beautiful families, they had to walk in the parade for the Fairfax Festival by themselves without the town council members with them. Why is that? Why are we not championing for these folks? Why are we not doing everything we can to make this property, to keep this property what it is? It's a treasure. It's a treasure. While we're making motions to create new housing and equity situations in the future by impacting our housing in ways that we can't really afford to do safely, we are letting this beautiful resource fade. And I think we need to step forward and really protect it. Thank you.
Thanks Holly. Next Liesl?
Yes, I think one of the issues with the Fairfax Children's Center is that the town council doesn't really have any power over that particular issue. It's not part of the town council's purview, but that doesn't mean that we can't as a town do something about this. You know, one of the things that we can continue to do is to support the children's center and encourage the school district to negotiate with them. I think that town members have been active. I know that Larry Bregman on his own part has been trying to help figure out some of the issues around the fire safety and the different hydrants. So that's, you know, a wonderful thing that's been going on. I think one of the things the school is really going to need is some fundraising because they're going to need to make massive repairs and they're going to try to get grants, but they're also probably going to need to buy some of that structure. So we can encourage initiatives to raise funds. And I did look into whether we could actually tax ourselves as some communities do to support affordable childcare. I think we may be sort of taxed out, but that might be something to investigate in the future. But it is really important. It's sort of like the heart and soul of our town in some ways that that center is there.
Thank you. Lynette?
I've been studying this issue with the Fairfax and Salmo Children's Center. Even though I am not a mother, I have lots of friends that have children that went through the center. And for years and years, that's been there for fifty years. The people who run the center wish to buy the center and raise money, to do, buy grants, to raise money, to fix it themselves. I think that the town, the school board should vote as they had promised to, to sell it to the Children's Center people. They have a nonprofit, they have grants, they can raise a lot of money to do what they need to do. Yes, they need three hundred thousand dollars worth of sprinklers installed. Maybe we can get a better deal from local contractors that want us to make sure that we keep this wonderful valuable resource for our children in our community that is essential for fifty years. And it's astounding to me that the current school board does not support this. And I think that they need to reconsider, you know, immediately and start working closely with the Fairfax and Salmo Children's Center people.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Hi, yes, thank you for the question. So I recently spoke at a Ross Valley School District meeting where this topic was on the agenda. I offered public comment. Providing that we absolutely support a solution that would keep the school on site. If it is safe to do so, I received applause from the Fairfax and Salmo Children's Center community. There's been a Deer Park Working Group that has formed with the board of the district as well as the Children's Center leadership. And they have agreed on a sale transfer and that process is underway. What I think needs to happen is a parallel path of exploring funding right now for this. for this, whatever the sale price is, as well as all of the updates, all the code updates, renovations that are going to be required. I think we should be reaching out to Marin Community Foundation and others. The council wrote a letter in support of keeping the site there, that it's a community wide issue. It is not one entity's issue. It is a community issue that we should all be working to solve. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cindy.
Thank you. I knew the Sidermans who started the children's center there. It is a great asset for our community and at a Deer Park Neighbor Get Together. It's certainly an area of concern for the Deer Park neighborhood who are working to keep that children's center there as well. I totally support it, and I think we need to do everything we can to help them stay there. And to whether it's, you know, looking at grants or looking at fundraising. We need to be a close partner with the children's center to keep them there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're moving on to the next question. And the question is, what measures would you propose towards improving cell service and broadband in Fairfax, especially during emergencies? Can we implement municipal wireless network in town? And we'll begin this question with Liza.
Yeah, this is an interesting one because this has come up repeatedly recently in walking neighborhoods. There's a lot of concern about lack of cellphone access. And people are particularly concerned about what will happen if there is an emergency and they can't access cell phones like some of the rest of the town can. And so I think one of the things that people need to know is that there is a like a the townhouse cars that would go around neighborhoods. And I think it's called HiLo that would actually notify people if HiLo means go if there was an emergency. Obviously, that's not as good as having a cellphone. People can also get these NOAA radios that would actually give them alert, even if they're in low reception areas when there was an actual emergency. But people would prefer actually to be able to have better internet. And that's something that I can't, you know, answer at this time how we would do that. But it is an extreme concern both within sort of, well, a number of neighborhoods where people can't get reception, including parts of Victory Village and the area around Deer Park. So I think it's worth further study. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lynette.
I live up on the hill and on the canyon up on Scenic Road. And I have three different types of phones that all drop out intermittently, no matter what I do, no matter what company that I belong to. It's very frustrating and also, I think, dangerous. When I had electricity up on Scenic Road, go out eight times in July and August. I had no way to. I had to go out to my car where I could charge my cellphone. Then I had to drive down the hill and get halfway down the street to have reception. This is a frightening aspect for anybody in our neighborhood. It's a I complained to all the companies. It hasn't done any good. We need to put in a better infrastructure for our cell phones. We need. I have emergency radios. I have them in case. I have a crank radio in case my electric goes out yet again. It's it's a frightening aspect. And if there's anything we can do to improve the situation, that I totally support that.
Thank you. Stephanie.
Hi, yes, thank you. So a couple of facts. So California requires landline operators to have 72 hours of backup power. Now, that's that's just for the subset of us that still have landlines, but it's important that everybody know that. Totally agree that currently there's too many folks at risk during power shutdowns. And, you know, the the cellphone boosters go out. We we might have portable batteries, but those only are really good for one or two hours to do the charging that we need to do. Recently, our Fairfax Library was approved to be Phase One of a Resiliency Center. So I'm delighted that that will be underway. But I believe that the state needs a solution for cell signal when there's no power, that we are not alone. We are not the only community. This is a statewide issue. And I will always listen to hear more about this municipal wireless network, but I don't know enough about it to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy.
So in 2019, when we were experiencing a lot of PG&E power outages, I was at the start of Canyon Road. And what they used for a week long power outage was a plywood board with sticky notes telling them what stores had ice and what was going on. All of the fringes of Fairfax lacked cell service, even in even when there's power. So what Firewise Neighborhoods have been doing is providing NOAA radios and training residents on how to use them. We set them up for them so at least they could get an alert Marin evacuation notice. But I agree, we do need to look at how we can provide cell service, working with the state and utilities on the fringes of our community. I know MMWB is starting to look at some type of service post the fire that they had there recently. It's something we all need to work on for the community.
And Holly.
Yes, thank you so much. Well, you know, I am a country girl. I grew up in Sacramento, but I spent a lot of time living in the foothills. They're very wild and remote. And here now, also in Fairfax, I live up behind Manor in a more remote area. I would say that the answer to this challenge really is to go with the wires under the ground. It is the landlines that are the safest, both for fire danger and for if there's an emergency with the we're not cut off, the loss of communication capacity. Also, it saves our bodies from having more negative radiation from EMFs. I am grateful that we fought the 5G battle here, and I would like to see us continue to do so. I believe that having an emergency action plan as a community is essential. I love the neighborhood gatherings when phone trees are enacted and also the the radios as well. But for me, it's all about putting the putting the wires under the ground. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Right, moving on to question eight. The current town council has just unanimously passed two ordinances, strengthening just cause eviction protections and establishing rent stabilization, making Fairfax the first town in Marin to do so. Do you support rent stabilization and just cause eviction protections? What will you do to ensure that the newly passed ordinances are fully implemented and enforced? And we'll begin with Lynette.
I've spoken with several landlords about this, and it seems to me that they either don't understand what happened or that they are very put off by this these ordinances. And they are planning on not renting because it's it seems onerous to them. I I don't have renters, so I I, you know, they seem very affected by this and and were rather upset. I think for the tenants, it would be make them feel safer and that they have a reliable. They don't have to worry about a bunch of rent increases suddenly. That's very helpful. And I'm concerned that it will reduce the amount of rentable spaces because of that. But that's I'm still looking into it. So I don't have a strong opinion on this either way here.
Thank you. Stephanie.
Why? Yes, I do support it because I helped lead it based on the facts that we've had an exodus of artists, musicians from our town because of affordability. And the current California renters protection on the books were riddled with loopholes that we sought to close. If you are on a fixed income, you cannot afford a 10% increase year over year. If you're a single mom with kids, the same story. Working for the workforce doesn't get 10% increases per year. As far as implementation, I'm working on that right now. I I agree with Lynette, there's an opportunity for clear communication about what this means. It includes, you know, frequently asked questions. What does this mean for me as a tenant, as a landlord? All of that is underway with our partners, Legal Aid of Marin and other jurisdictions in the Bay Area that have this in place. So more to come, and I'm delighted that we are protecting our tenants in the community, 37% of our community. Thank you.
And Cindy.
I, like Lynette, am concerned about the effect this has on some of our landlords. And I'm concerned that we could lose rental housing. Some of our landlords may own one or two units and could be seniors who were using the rent to offset their social security since they were self-employed. So I'm concerned that when we look at a rate of 60% of a CPI and that we have housing that is old and in need of repair, that it's just going to affect our rental housing stock. I was at the Furthering Fair Housing meeting. We had a gentleman there concerned about his own mother who was running out her house and the effect of some of these policies would have on her as well. So.
Okay. And Holly.
Hi, thank you so much for this very important question. As everybody feels for those who are renting, I myself have been a renter at School Street and am currently still a renter. I'm not a homeowner. We all want to have reasonable, fair, maybe no rent increases from year to year. Certainly, nothing that's greater than inflation or that a normal person can can hold from one year to the next. However, this policy that was pushed through really is just another example of the march towards socialist housing agendas. And it's terrible to see our council approving this. I can tell you firsthand, Town and Country's Michael McIntosh and Fred Azazi are two of the last remaining independent renters who actually are where many of the musicians and the artists still live. And this does not support their ability to continue to do so.
Thank you. And Liza.
Yes, I think this is really a historic moment, we're the smallest town in California to implement a rent stabilization measure. And it really echoes what's going on nationwide as rents rise faster than incomes and put millions of people in jeopardy. So we really need to make sure that when we do this initiative, that we do it, and we do it well. So we need to have a really good system in place to monitor it, enforce it, and document how well it works and make any necessary adjustments. I think we talked about doing that after a year. We also need to continue to meet with renters and property owners and advocates for older adults and home match programs to get feedback on how these ordinances are working here in Fairfax's very unique environment. We need to make sure that property owners and tenants get the education they need to understand the new ordinances. If we do this well, this will be a model for the rest of the county. So all eyes are upon us at this time. We need to recognize that this is just one strategy to ensure affordable housing. And we need to recognize that the character of our town is as much about the people who live here as it is about the structures that comprise it. So I do believe housing is human right, and I want to make sure that if we do this, we do it well and make it fair for everyone involved. Thank you.
So next question. How do you think the town council can help the homelessness situation in Fairfax? And we'll begin this with Stephanie.
Hi, yeah. So at my request, the council hosted a forum on this topic, this very topic, on August 3rd in response to a lot of community questions about our current encampment, which houses or shelters. It's an unsheltered community of two people behind Perry Park. And I learned a tremendous amount in that session from Marin Health and Human Services, who visits the site three or four times a month. Our Fairfax Police Department has relationships with the members of that community and visits a couple of times a day. I visit at least once a week, and I have developed relationships with these folks. So the lack of quality, affordable housing has exacerbated social issues like homelessness. The Marin County offers or supports the strategy of housing first. We are getting our folks in Fairfax on the list to be housed. And I think we that that's the answer is to house them first and recognize them with compassion as members of our community. And thank you.
Okay, and Holly.
Thank you. Well, this question brings to my mind another question I have for our town council at this moment, which has to do with why there's so much spending on studies and having forums and consultants, millions of dollars, and very little action. I've known these gentlemen that are camping out for about five years. When one of them had lice, I came and gave him a new sleeping bag and bought them new supplies. I know them personally. Why aren't they being housed yet? I understand that in the Victory Village, which so many people accolade its existence, I am grateful that we have it. But I also have learned that our local folks here were not actually those that were able to get housing first there. I think both of these gentlemen could have been housed there first. Why didn't that happen then? I want to know why. We haven't done more. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cindy.
I agree with Stephanie that we need to work with the county. It's not homelessness is not just a small towns issue, but it is a county wide issue. And we need county wide resources to work through this. I'm glad that the county has is coming on a regular basis. And as far as in addition to our police force stopping by. So it's a continual effort to get them on a list for housing and work through that process.
Okay, thank you. And Liza.
Okay, I just want to make a correction. Local people have gotten into and do live in Victory Village and in Bennett House. We are just not allowed to prioritize them above other people who apply. We do have 11 units of housing for formerly unhoused individuals at Victory Village, which is an affordable housing complex for seniors that I spent two years of my life advocating for. I've also been an advocate for supportive housing for the formerly homeless because some of my experience around this housing has suggested to me that we really need to have supportive housing for people who need those services. I think the best action, course of action, is working with the county to get these individuals into the county's Housing First Program. It's been a highly successful program in getting people into housing and keeping them housed. But we need more affordable housing. We need more supportive housing, and we just don't have enough. If the encampment grows, you know, I think that we might need to take other measures to make sure that it stays safe and hygienic and comfortable for both the people who use the park and the people who are living in the park. But I do think we want to make sure that all the residents that we have feel welcome in our parks and our community and that the basic rules of civility apply to everyone, whether they're housed or unhoused. Thank you.
And Lynette.
Well, first of all, I think that we need to deal with the reality that there's a lot more than just two people that are homeless in the town of Fairfax. Those are the two people that I understand actually talk to the social workers. I say you're missing out on another 2025 that are camped out above the 711 on Sir Francis Drake, behind the Victory Village in various ridges and places scattered around Fairfax. That's one thing is that there's definitely more than two people that are homeless. I wish that they weren't in Perry Park, and so does everybody else. I think that we should also look at the fact that we need to to decide upon a place where we can camp them out until there is housing and and pay for a porta potty that's $200 a week to have them come in and service every three days. And, you know, have more interaction with that community instead of saying, oh, there's only two. I went and visited them. Those are the ones that aren't hiding. They're afraid of the police. They're afraid of the of the social services. They may be drug and alcohol addicted. They need help.
Thank you. All right, moving on. The next question is, with the increased use of e-bikes, do you believe the town should create? The next question is, with the increased use of e-bikes, do you believe the town should create regulations around them? And what would you suggest? So we'll begin this with Cindy.
So um, e-bikes and it's not only e-bikes, it's e-scooters, e rollers, skates, e- everything that we're seeing now. Um, it has provide, it has presented some safety issues in the downtown area. We have had um, issues where we have parklets and we have people that work in the restaurants serving the parklets that have been hit by people on um, electrified transportation. So it is a problem in our community, both um, on our downtown area and in the neighborhoods as well, where people are using them to um, riding them too fast uh, without helmets. I know MCBC um, Safe Rites to School is starting some programs. But I think we need to go back to having some uh, police education stops downtown like we have in the past, so for bicyclists, so that everybody knows clearly what um, the rules are for using electric devices.
All right, and Holly?
It feels like uh, when a teenager is riding an e-bike or e-scooter that they are um, behind the will of a vehicle before they've um, gone through the process of getting a driver's license and understanding what it really means to work in traffic. Um, I'm not sure about creating a formal policy or permit. But I think it would be really nice if uh, we could work with the schools to offer um, processes of learning. Or maybe the town could uh, sponsor something that has no cost um, that um, the children could get certificates from. Um, it really requires um, education and practice and application and then a willingness and a, on a volunteer basis um, for parents and the students themselves to really um, take pride and responsibility in operating these vehicles safely.
Thank you. Liso?
Yeah, I mean, I think overall, I think it's really great that people are using e-bikes. Um, and I think we should applaud that. You know, we have a very car-centered culture. Um, but we've all decried the amount of traffic that there is. So I'm really glad that some people are finding it easier to ride bikes. And I think that e-bikes will help it, help make it easier for people to commute up and down the hills in a way that wasn't possible with just muscle-powered bikes for some people. Um, I think that um, MCBC and others have been really good with instilling a cultural civility with at least some mountain bikers. I've been hearing this from some people in the community. I think we need to work a lot on road civility and sharing the road successfully between multiple users. We just don't have the infrastructure that safely accommodates all these different modes of transportation. Um, so I think we need to look at how we can let bikes in, but also make sure that um, bicycle users have a culture of civility um, with other users on the road. So I know the town was working on an initiative around e-bikes. Um, and I don't know all of the details. Um, but I do think that it's extremely important that we work especially with children about safety issues. I see kids all the time with another kid on the back and screaming and no helmets on it. I I'm really am concerned about their safety. Thank you.
Lynette?
Well, I have an interesting take on this since I am rider of a Segway, which is a two-wheeled robotic uh, it's it's actually robotic cherry is what I call. You have to wear a backpack to go to the store. But I need to use the the bike lanes, which are poorly maintained. So uh, I've seen that people don't like to ride on roads of the bike lanes where it's all torn up. They're going to go on the sidewalks or another street, even though that's not a a bike lane. Um, I think we need to repaint the bike lanes uh, and definitely try to extend those areas of safety. I I really love the museum of of the bicycle museum and I think that they should conduct classes there. We could have, since that is a center for bicycling, we could conduct safety classes that are free for the public somehow and work that out to ins- in to instill the sense of respect and safety into our young people that have these e-bikes. And make sure that they know that there, but my e-bike, my, well, it's not an e-bike. My Segway doesn't go over twelve miles an hour. And I see these these e-bikes just zip right by me, zip right by me all the time. So they need to be aware and that's what, you know, education is key.
Thank you. And Stephanie?
Yes, hi. So yeah, clearly there's been a proliferation of e-bikes in the community. We are not the only community that's experiencing this and it's a good problem to have. And from the climate standpoint, it's an integral part of how we're going to get to net zero by twenty thirty. I wrote a letter to the community about the safety violations that we're all observing. I have two teenagers that ride e-bikes. I know it very, very well. So I actually sat down with ten parents recently and everyone agreed it starts with the parents. And there's been a really nice coordination with Marin County Bicycle Coalition, the schools, including Archie Williams and White Hill. White Hill is actually looking at a certification program there. Everyone is taking this very, very seriously. And as I mentioned, we are developing a campaign that would include repainting um, or creating sharos downtown, but it's a walk your wheels because there have been terrible accidents on the sidewalk with um, riders, bike riders on the sidewalk. So we are looking at really asking bike riders to either walk their wheels, scooters and skateboarders walk their wheels downtown or um, use the bike lane. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and this is going to be our last question. Our police and fire departments are essential services. What do you see are the main challenges to preserving these vital services? And what steps would you propose to meet those challenges? And we'll begin with Holly.
I've heard the town council say time and again that safety is a priority and especially for the fire department and our police emergency services. And yet they just passed a million point two dollars for our outside consultant to see if we could get more dense housing here. And I have seen no funds being directed to our firefighters. I am interested in shifting the conversation away from building high-density housing to first really focusing on our basic infrastructure. I would like to see an addition to our current firehouse. It's my understanding that they don't even have room to um, bring in another uh, person or two on their crew because there's not enough room for them to sleep. I am under the understanding that they are often worked so much that they themselves are in a stressed response when they're showing up to stressful situations. I think we definitely need to improve the staffing of our fire department before we spend any more money on the housing elements or anything else that brings more people into our town. Thank you.
And Liso?
Right. I mean, I think that uh, we're aware that we have a short-staffed fire department and that uh, most jurisdictions in Marin have um, three firefighters to a rig and that we have two. And I think that there are a number of people working on that uh, solution to that right now. Um, one of the issues is that um, the Ross Valley Fire Station is going to close down in some uh, three or four years. And that will mean that some of those um, staff will be relocated to Fairfax. So that will be one possible um, fix. I believe that the um, firefighters in the town um, have applied for a grant to help address some of these issues. So I think people are working on getting together the funding and the um, right infrastructure to change this. But we also have to realize that the fire department um, is going to possibly change its structure in a few years as well, which might also help um, fix some of these problems. So I I do understand that people are working on this right now and that it um, really needs to be addressed because we need to address fire safety in particular. Um, let's see. Well, that's it. Okay, thanks.
Right. And Lynette?
Well, one of the reasons that the firefighters union endorsed me is that I'm absolutely, I think it's outrageous that we have two firefighters at any time instead of the standard three or four like everywhere else outside Ross Valley. If we have a problem, we can't get in and out on Sir Francis Drake. We have, we have two firefighters and two cops and that's it for emergency people here in town. We need to increase funding for both the firefighters and the police department. I I don't, I think we're understaffed at the police department also. And also I'm working on a project right now to re-establish the Volunteer Fire Brigade, which used to be quite vigorous. Now this is zero. There's no volunteer fire brigade in the town of Fairfax, which I think we must re-establish. And I have some plans for that to help.
Okay, Stephanie?
Hi, yes. Um, a lot of what Liso said, yes, um, we have. Um, I sit on the Ross Valley Fire Department Board. I also have the Marin Professional Firefighters endorsement. There's a reason for that because I'm advocating and been outspoken about the unacceptable understaffing or sub-staffing. It's not just in the event of a fire. So most of the calls are medical calls and they require two engines because the equipment to serve someone is so heavy that they have to pull another engine from another station. It's not okay for the firefighters. It's not okay for our community. We need to do better. Yes, we applied for a safe grant. We haven't heard and the allocation of resources from the Ross closure will go to San Anselmo and Fairfax. So that gets us partial the way there as far as funding. We do, uh, and San Anselmo is passing or has on the ballot rather as a safety measure, a tax measure, which will also help with the funding. Uh, we do have in the budget this year to upgrade the facilities. That's been pending for some time and I'm delighted to support um, our firefighters in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy?
So I as well support three firefighters on a truck. Um, there's a lot of changes going on with the Ross Valley Fire Department with the Ross Station closing and that distributes their firefighters to the other stations. But there's also with the fire chief um, contract um, not being, not going forward. The look at how the Ross Valley Fire District will be in the future. Um, so a lot of changes there as well as needing to upgrade our own fire station. Um, as far as you also mentioned the police department, I think our um, police department is a model of community policing. And I'm happy to be endorsed by um, the Fairfax Police Officers Association. Um, their model of community policing was started by our former police chief, Chief Moran. And I'm happy to have their support.
Okay, thank you all. That concludes the question portion of the forum. Before the candidates make their closing statements, I want to share some key information about this year's election. New this year, Marin County has implemented the Voters' Choice Act, offering more days and more ways to vote. Early last week, every active registered voter was sent mail-in ballot. Ballots can be returned by US Mail at an official secure ballot drop box or at a vote center. For in-person voters voting, vote centers replace the assigned neighborhood polling places. Voters may vote in person at any vote center in Marin. A complete list of locations is included in your Marin County Voter Information Guide. All vote centers will be open at least four days before election day. If you have questions, please reach out to the Marin County's Elections Department in person, online, or by phone. Slide one, please. Here are some important dates. Ballots were mailed on Monday, October tenth. Official ballot drop boxes are now available. October twenty-fourth is the last day to register to vote online. After that date, you can still register in person at a vote center or at the Elections Department. Some of the vote centers open on October twenty-ninth. All others open on November fifth. November eighth, I hope you all know, is election day. Vote centers are open until eight PM. Mailed ballots must be postmarked no later than this date. Ballots returned using a ballot drop box must be deposited by eight PM. Please remember to sign your ballot if you return it by mail or in a drop box. Your signature is your verification. Slide two, please. There are many online resources for election information, including the league's website at Marin LWV.org. I want to highlight one of these. Voters Edge is an online tool that provides unbiased, in-depth information about what's on your ballot in English and in Spanish. It is a project of the League of Women Voters. Candidates are invited to enter their information. Voters can get a personalized list of candidates, including their biographies and top priorities, information about local ballot measures and more. Please visit votersedge.org. And if any of your candidates have not provided their information, you can contact them right from the website. I'm happy to see information on all candidates participating in tonight's forum appear in Voters Edge. You'll see this slide again at the end of the forum, so you can take a photo or make a note. Thank you. And now the candidates will make closing statements of one minute each. We will go in reverse order of the opening statements, starting with Stephanie Hellman.
Thank you. Three years ago, when I was running for this office, I had no track record in the public sector and thus had very few endorsements. Since being elected, I have proven to be very effective. I do the work. I make myself accessible. I take the time to research issues. I summarize key topics to educate the community and dispel false narratives with facts. I build relationships and I roll up my sleeves. I've established credibility as a trusted leader who listens, responds, and takes action on issues that are important to this community. And it's been recognized. As a direct result of my commitment and action, I've been honored with the endorsements of over thirty current and former elected officials, including Congressman Jared Huffman. I am proud to be endorsed by Marin Democrats, Sierra Club, Marin Professional Firefighters, North Bay Labor Council, and I'm the only Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense candidate in this race. There is so much I enjoy about this meaningful work and I'm honored to have the opportunity to continue to serve. Thank you again for hosting us this evening.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Lynette Shaw.
Well, I had several people ask me to run because they were worried about the way, the direction of Fairfax is going. They know that I'll stand up for the people. They know that I'm strong, that I'm not afraid of government mechanicians. And that uh, I've had a lot of experience in a lot of different areas in my life. And uh, this has been a a very wonderful experience for me. And I I I'm honored to be the the voice of the people, to stand up for the people. I, what I, the, what I've been hearing from a lot of people is they don't want to see business as usual. They don't want to see the regular people that have been doing what they're doing to be, continue to do what they do. So I I think this is an opportunity to change the direction of Fairfax and I'm glad to be in this race. And I certainly hope that I have a chance to help everybody.
Liso Glass?
Hi, well, I think that Fairfax faces an era of unparalleled challenges and opportunity. You know, we have excessive track, traffic and yet we have a thriving downtown. We have wildfire risk. But we have new tools to deal with wildfire risk and it's bringing our community together in new ways. We have rising housing costs, but we have new affordable housing strategies. And our housing mandate will really push us to balance our commitments to social equity and the environment in new ways. Fairfax needs council members who can approach these challenges with diligence and equanimity. I have a track record of bringing community members together around um, different issues from serving as a board member for Sustainable Fairfax and putting on a community event such as walks that brought together people from different um, aspects of Fairfax to have experiential education about sustainability, to helping the Fairfax Lutheran Church manifest its vision of affordable senior housing on its former church site. Um, I think that my list of endorsements shows that my knowledge and dedication to these local issues has been recognized. I have been endorsed by the Marin Professional Firefighters, the Ross Valley Firefighters Association, um, the Marin Democratic Party, Marin Young Democrats, the Marin Women's Political Action Committee, the North Bay Labor Council, and a number of um, local electives and community members. Thank you.
Holly Beatty?
That's Holly Beatty. Thank you. Now you won't forget it. Um, so Fairfax, um, we are at a critical time. We are at a pivotal moment where you have, right now, the ability to halt what has been happening, which is a runaway train where the town council, despite what council member Stephanie has to say right now, there is no listening. You go to council and you speak and they turn the microphone off while you're talking. They turn their heads down and they shake while you're speaking. It is um, known amongst all of the people of this community that there is that there is no response and no listening on the part of the council at this time. Currently, people are being threatened to have their housing taken away from them from client, climate action policies that are being enacted. We need to start really listening to our community and not wa- working with hypocrisy. Thank you so much.
And Cindy Swift?
Thank you. Councilmember Goddard once said, "This council is about creating a balance of views, perspectives, skills, and talent." And I agree with that statement. And I believe my years of service in the community on various boards and commissions, along with my professional career as an IT program and project manager, have given me the knowledge of the community as well as the skills necessary to work collaboratively, manage budgets, and be successful in community engagement. I will be an independent, responsible, and responsive community council member. I have a broad range of support, including elected officials and many former council members and mayors, members of the Fairfax Open Space Committee and the entire Fairfax Planning Commission, which could mean that they just want to get rid of me, organizations, including the Marin Young Democrats, the Marin Women's Political Action Committee and the Fairfax Police Officers Association, as well as many community members and leaders whose endorsement and reasons for those endorsements I cherish. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to our host partners, to the candidates for participating, and to the League Forum team. A video of tonight's forum will be posted on the League's website in the next few days. Thank you again for joining us this evening and most important, thank you for voting. And now a few final comments from our host partner Kaz Begley, past president of the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce.
Well, what a creative and dynamic conversation tonight. I'm very, very grateful to everybody who joined us online, to the candidates, and to the League of Women's Voters of Marin County for allowing us to have this conversation and allowing us to be more informed. Thank you so much. We wish you good night. We wish you best wishes and much success, each one of your candidates. And thank you from the Chamber of Commerce. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.